Let's get started. Welcome to the October 7th to 2021. Meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is now called to order. Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Board. We will now start our meeting with the roll call. Oh. And then we'll first and then we'll have a roll call and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. So when I call your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. 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 Wolfson.
Thank you. Great. Thanks for coming.
Todd, Todd, you gotta mute yourself. Ms. Wolfson, Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Perlo.
Chair.
Mr. Warren.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Mr. Caligari.
Here.
Mr. Fotus. Mr. Eri. Okay. Thank you, and please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Tracey, are there any changes to the tentative agenda?
Madam Chair, no changes.
Thank you. In the September 30th email, you received draft minutes of the September 23rd, 2021 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to look those over? If so, does anybody have any corrections? If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This evening, we have an opportunity to further discuss, then vote, on whether the development plan for the Davis Farm, PAI 1-0606, presents a master plan conflict. This issue was introduced to the Board on September 2nd, 2021. At the September 2nd, 2021, Mrs. Jennifer Nugent, Division Chief of the Department Development Review, presented the Department of Planning's determination. This was followed by comments from council representing the developer, protesters, and the People's Council. Members of the public were given opportunities to speak on this issue. Mrs. Nugent, Mr. Alterman, Mr. McKen, McCain, and Mr. Zimmerman are here to answer any further questions that the Board might have before we take a vote. Board members, are there any outstanding questions? Or any further discussion you need to have in this matter? Mrs. Wolfson is having issues getting into the meeting.
I just advanced her in.
Thank you so much. Board members, are there any comments? Okay. We should probably wait for Ms. Wolfson.
Thank you, Nina.
Are you in?
Um, I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're breaking up. Ms. Wolfson?
Yeah.
Wait, I just called to see if anyone has any questions or further discussion on the Davis Farm.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay. Thank you. No, I'm fine with Davis Farms. Thank you.
Okay. So no discussion? If there's no further discussion, can I have a motion?
Sure. Be it moved that for the reasons stated in the August 23rd, 2021 staff report and reports from the Concept Plan Conference and Development Plan Conference, the Planning Board's decision to the Administrative Law Judge is that the proposed development, Davis Farm, does not constitute as a conflict with the master plan.
Aye.
All right, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna call for a vote. When I call your name.
Need a second for the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm gonna call a roll call. Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Ms. Panero?
Aye.
Mr. Hartman?
Nay.
Mr. Halepka?
No.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Wolfson? Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Perlo?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Caligari?
Aye.
Mr. Fotus? Mr. Eri?
Aye.
So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in favor, 1, 2, 3, 4 opposed. Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an opportunity to further discuss and then vote on Resolution 46-21, Minimum Width Requirements: Town Homes and Group Homes, which was introduced at the Board at the September 2nd, 2021 meeting by Ms. Nugent, Division Chief and Development Review. A public hearing was held on September 23rd, 2021. Mrs. Nugent is here to answer any further questions that the Board might have before we take a vote. Ms. Nugent, is there anything that you would like to add at this time?
Um, I don't believe so. I, our, our report, hopefully everybody still has it and our, our recommendation stands.
Thank you so much. Does the Board have any questions for Ms. Nugent or any comments?
Nancy?
Yes, Ms. Wolfson.
So, the planning department is proposing that...
Ms. Wolfson, we're having a very difficult time hearing you.
Can you mean?
You're going in and out. I, I, I think, can someone tech, that's there technically help her? Maybe if she turns off her video, we'll be able to hear her.
Yes, turn off her, turn off her camera, I think.
Did you hear that? Kathy, turn off your camera. That, we might be able to hear you better then.
I think it's this 200-year-old tree I live under that is blocking my signal. Is this better?
Yes.
Much. Okay. Ms. Nugent, I see that something you, that the Planning Department may support is that it only apply to growth tier one. Could you please tell us how much of the county inside the Erdle is subject to growth tier one percentage-wise?
I don't have that statistic readily available at this moment.
Well, would you agree that it is at least 90%?
Oh, yes.
It?
Yes, it's a large majority.
So it effectively would apply to almost the entire area inside the Erdle, correct?
Yes.
And isn't this, isn't this 16-foot townhouse, aren't they already permitted in a pud?
Yes, we said that in our report.
Right, so I just, I have to question why it should apply count-wide without the pud when it's already permitted. It's, it's, um... So that's my opinion, but I see this opening a floodgate and I see just adding more and more stock to the low-income or workforce communities in the eastern and western parts of the county. And I think we've, we've, I know in District 4, we have enough of it. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. Does anyone else have any comments from the Board?
I do.
Sorry.
Mr. Halepka?
I just wanted to, to clarify with Ms. Nugent. But the, the staff recommendation is to leave things as is and that letting the 16-foot only apply by pud. Am I, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, that is correct. All right, someone else? Yes. Mr. Perlo or Todd?
Let Todd go.
All right, all right, someone else have a comment?
Sorry, guys, I got interrupted. I apologize. I just, I just want it to be known, I live in a community that has 16-foot townhomes in it called Parkview Trails. I think the challenge that the county has, and it's a challenge that's affecting the whole country, is affordable housing. We are going to price ourselves out of, and I don't wanna call it low, or low-income housing. This, these are working-class people that can't afford to buy a house in our county. So I was able to buy a house for $98,000 bucks in Parkview Trails when I first moved here. I love the community. I stayed there. I can afford a million-dollar house, but I stayed there. And I love the community. So, you know, I think it's a bigger problem than, than just Baltimore, but it's a huge problem in Baltimore County, and we need to really consider this. I've driven around the state. I've been to Pennsylvania recently and seen 16 wides. They look, they look great. I don't see why we wouldn't allow 16 wides in Baltimore County.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Madam Chair, I did send an email to Board members, and my question is, why do we, why are we skipping from 20 to 16? And what happened to 18, which could be a compromise? And no one has answered our question.
I can answer that question, Mr. Ray. They're asking for, to reduce the minimum width, which means that they could do an 18. If we reduce the minimum width down to 16, they can do 16, 18, 20. They can do any width they want down to, now, we did put in our report, if you all wanna consider, you know, reducing the width either 16 or 18, we made some recommendations as a conditional use.
I'm ready for me?
Yes, Mr. Perlo.
Thanks, Nancy. Um, our county is an aging county. It's been around for 100 years longer than that through the history of the state of Maryland, but actively built out in the last 100 years. We don't have a lot of land left within the Erdle or the Metropolitan District to be developed. There's a little bit on the east side maybe left in the future, but the rest of our county, as others have said, are pretty well-built out in the other districts, going from the first on the west to the, you know, the sixth. Pretty much with what's in process right now will be pretty well-built out as well. Affordability is a major issue for our county. Todd, what are the houses going for now in Parkview Trails? I'm in the impression they're in the 230 to 280 range. Is that correct?
225 is pretty standard, but yeah, it's, it's in the 2, 215 to 245 range.
So that's my point, okay, that, that they're an affordable house, maybe not the prettiest outside because they were built 25 or 30 years ago. They have aluminum siding and maybe some brick on them and all. And I did that development for the builder at that time. But that's an affordable house that people that might wanna move out of the city, people who might be working in the city at one of the hospitals, that wants to have a house rather than renting, and rents have gone up very substantially through this pandemic, you know, has the opportunity to buy an affordable house. That's what 16-foot homes allow us to do and have allowed us in the other counties that surround us, and Rundle, Howard, Prince George's, Harford County. The, everybody thinks that, you know, somehow the developers are going to just, you know, add an extra 200 houses to a piece of land. Our land is zoned. That zoning is set by our Board and our council people. Whether it goes from 3.5 to 16, however many acres you have to develop is gonna be limited to the full density of those acreages. So there might be a few more houses. There might be 25 more houses, but there's not gonna be hundreds of more houses on these projects. And most of our projects we're gonna find are gonna be smaller redevelopment projects of 2, 5, if you're lucky, 10 acres, maybe a shopping center that no longer can support, is not supported by the community and has become an eyesore and probably should be torn down. And we've seen housing built behind Foundry Row, you know, apartments at that point. You know, there's no reason to say that housing can't be done, but it needs to be affordable. Having a pud is expensive for the developer. The legal cost of going through the pud process is difficult. We do it, but we do it generally on large projects, 100, 200, 400 houses. But we don't have the land to do that anymore. So to require someone that's going to develop a smaller project, you know, if you had 2 acres and you were doing, you know, 10.5 or 16, you're only talking about 32 houses. To spread the cost of that pud over those houses is expensive. So you've defeated the purpose of trying to build an affordable house. I believe that we need this as our county redevelops. We have places in my district in Pikesville that are small, in old Pikesville from the 30s and 40s, that a project was taken down and a small development of 20, 30, maybe 40 houses was built. I believe that there's not a problem. The County Planning Board, if we approve this today, still has the right to review all of the plans. We have plan books now in the county that we didn't have 25 and 30 years ago. The product demands it. The purchaser demands a better-looking outside, if that's what we're concerned with. There's a project up in Glendon that we approved a year or two ago that has about 30 houses, and we made them put gingerbread, I'm gonna call it, on the back of the houses because we, as the Planning Board, thought that was the right thing to do. So they still need to go through the process. The concern seems to be the look of these houses, the older ones that were built in the county at that point. But we showed you very substantial pictures of projects in Howard County, an upscale community, a very nice county to live in, where the 16-footers were, were readily accepted and did allow that. Some are now three-story houses, but they had the square footage. And, you know, many years ago, I sold townhouses off of Mill for Mill Road, Liberty Road. And, you know, I would admit, those outsides, the siding was not very pretty. But as I've been back through the development, it's been replaced with many much nicer projects, and the project still looks nice. But I found, living in one of those houses myself, with my daughter and son at that time, that it was a very small bedroom in that house, as I said a couple weeks ago. To have 2 16-foot bedrooms can be better than having 2 small 8-foot bedrooms at that point. You know, I believe in it. I believe our county, you know, with all of the issues that we've had with our consent decree and all, has to look to provide affordable housing to the community. And that's what I see us doing here. The Home Builders Association provided us information that it would save $40,000, even if it's only $30,000. That's 10% of the value of a house, and you're able to provide and have the ability to buy that house easier because you don't need as much down payment, your settlement cost or something less. And it's something I think we need to provide to our county, which has gotten to be very close to a 50-50 minority county.
Thank you, Mr. Perlo. Are there any other comments from the plant, from the Board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to echo the comments of Mr. Warren and Mr. Perlo on this front and taking it from a different perspective here. I'm 30 years old, and I'm very lucky that my wife and I are both attorneys and are able to live in a single-family home in the Towson area. But for a lot of the people in my age cohort, buying a home, especially in Baltimore County, is becoming less and less of an option. And as Mr. Warren and Mr. Perlo noted, we have to be creative with solutions for that. We have the Erdle in place. It's a great feature of our county that it limits development of rural and agrarian areas. But in order to balance both the Erdle and also meet the needs of the county, meet the needs of young families and of people who don't necessarily have the savings or income to be able to afford a larger home, we need to create more options. And I think this does that. Now, it does, it does that without, I think, really doing anything detrimental. What, what I've seen is that there are certainly concerns about, as Mr. Perlo noted, the sidings of these homes, but, but the appearance has improved over time. And also, I think you just simply need a range of options. If we're gonna meet the housing demands of a new generation, and if we're going to avoid a scenario where Baltimore County sort of ages out, where young families choose to move to Carroll or Harford, where there are more new housing developments being built up that are more affordable, we really need to avoid that because that's gonna hurt, number one, our tax base, number one, the growth of our economy. And I think it really is something where, to me, this is a no-brainer. I think that it's a common sense solution to addressing a problem, and realistically, I, I don't really see there being too many negatives at all.
Thank you, Mr. Caligari. Is there any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, this is for Ms. Nugent. So what will you do, Ms. Nugent, to address parking issues? To make sure that when these houses are built, there's enough parking?
We made recommendations in our report. You know, there, there are zoning requirements for parking in housing developments. So I guess I'm not particularly understanding your specific question regarding parking.
Yeah, because I have some of those houses where I live here in Rosedale, you know, like I put in my email, residents, they are always fighting for parking. They don't have enough parking. They have to squeeze because they don't have enough space. So my question is, are we going to make sure that as they build these houses, they actually take into consideration additional parking or enough parking to accommodate everyone?
Um, I mean, I can't answer that for certain. We are doing a recommendation or a report back to the council as to whether this is a good idea. We've already made our position known that we don't recommend it. If it were to change, the zoning code would have to be rewritten, and I'm sure there would be discussions about how to accommodate the parking because even without reducing the widths today, everybody does recognize that parking is an issue with townhome communities. You know, you, more people have more cars per family. It's not as when these regulations were put into, into law that, you know, that, that statistic has changed. People didn't have as many automobiles per family as they do now. So unless he wants to come in.
If I may piggyback on what Ms. Nugent said, one of the comments that's been made, and I think some of the images even from MBIA, is that you do not have a front parking pad. If you have a 16-foot wide house, you're not gonna have a front parking pad. You're not going to have a front garage. But they could accommodate a garage in the back of the property. It doesn't change the on-street parking. You know, the widths of the roads and those things are, are looked at by our department, by planning, as well as Public Works when they're reviewing the plans. And I know that Ms. Nugent and I have both heard comments from traffic engineers in Public Works about their concern not to reduce road widths in order to address more cars. As Ms. Nugent said, as more and more people have 2 or 3, 4 cars in their household. But the parking is a factor in reviewing any development plan, whether the unit is 16-foot wide or 20-foot wide. So that's looked at as the code requires or zoning regulations require. But it's not... It's, it's looked at in conjunction with it, but the width of the house itself, we didn't pack front parking, but not necessarily parking on the property in the back.
Mr. Lafferty, won't the County Planning Department have to review these plans as they do every project, all the way through the project, for design, for road width, for parking? Isn't that required even without a pud?
It depends on if it's a major subdivision or not. I mean, as you know, Mr. Perlo, the, you know, if it's a limited exemption or it's a revised plan, there's different standards for review. But yes, Ms. Nugent and her team are always engaged in reviewing plans, regardless of the width of the house, of the unit.
And we don't have that many exemptions in the county.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Heckman?
This, yeah, this is Mark Heckman. As an architect who has designed a whole lot of multifamily projects all throughout Maryland and Mid-Atlantic. I have to say, I'm not sure why we're concerned about 18-foot townhouses, 16-foot townhouses. Just about every jurisdiction allows it by right. And I would suggest, and they're very nice. We, we do it all the time. They're very nice townhouses. I would submit, and then the reason is, is because not everybody needs a 2,800-square-foot, you know, house. You know, not everybody can afford a 2,800-square-foot house. So having this option of a smaller house is not a bad thing, and I would suggest. And it's also more sustainable, that it uses less, you know, non-renewable materials to construct. It uses less energy to operate. So it not only is less expensive on construction, it's, you don't have to spend as much to heat and cool it and light it. As with parking, I would also suggest that there's no market-rate developer that I know of that will want to do anything less than what the county is gonna require for parking. That they just won't do it for anything less than 2 or 2 and 1/2 parking spaces per unit, unless it's like right up against a transit station or something like that. So I, I would, I would encourage all of us to look at the 16, allowing the 16 and 18-foot townhouses without going through the process, the lengthy process of the pud.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Are there any more comments?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Wayne McGinnis. I, I understand. I appreciate the fact that the developers and the bankers want to have more density where they can make more money. However, every new person that they bring in doesn't necessarily pay more in taxes than they receive in benefits from the county. And those who are looking for more affordable housing, less-cost housing, they can do what thousands of people have been doing in the last 30 years. they can do what thousands of people have been doing in the last thirty years. And like one said earlier, they move to Carroll County or Hartford County or Adams County or York County. There is cheaper land up there and more affordable housing. And you only have to get on eighty-three any evening and see how many cars are going north and how many are coming south. And I just disagree with packing more in is going to benefit the rest of the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Any other comments?
Can I say I have my
to my colleagues and by saying, yes, those people all move out to Carroll County, but they have to drive back to Towson for their jobs. And so, you know, again, getting back to the notion of sustainability, you know, that means they got to drive farther away. They have to drive farther, and that's, you know, and use more fossil fuels.
That's their option.
Mr. McGinnis? I mean,
You said that, that's their option when they weigh all the factors and the less taxes, less cost out in the other areas, and that's why they move.
Thank you. Mr. Halepka.
I guess a couple of thoughts to Mr. McGinnis's point. I think if you look at the, the sort of cost per house, I mean, you're going, it's just, it's going to be more economical for the counties to have denser housing where you've got more. And I think what you're seeing in some of these outline, you know, Carroll County, York County, et cetera, they're still relatively early in the process. Wait another decade or two and see what happens when they've got to repay for their infrastructure and what that happens to the tax rates. I think we're seeing that some in Hartford County. As to the other issue, I mean, I take the point that, you know, we need, we need to figure out how to get more housing in the county. The one concern that I have is it's one thing to say that you need that a sixteen-foot wide house would make it more economical to build housing in, say, Towson, where land is really expensive. But in parts of the county, east side, southeast side, the southwest side, where you don't have, is where the homes aren't as affordable. My concern is that you'll get developers who decide they're going to build the sixteen-footers because they're only going after the low end of the housing market. That'll further concentrate sort of the, the the lower-income households in parts of the county and won't necessarily disperse them, which I think is also part of the goal of the consent decree, is to figure out how to get affordable housing throughout the county, so.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka. Any other comments? If not, can I have a motion?
Will we make a motion?
So the most I have is that be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the staff report on minimum width requirement, townhouses, group houses, and recommends it be forwarded to the county council for appropriate action.
May I have a second?
Wouldn't we make the, like, if, like, I would want to make a motion to approve the sixteen wides, so.
Either on the floor.
There's a motion on the table. It needs a second. You vote, and if you don't, then you entertain another motion.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, let's go for a vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
Excuse me. Real quick, we're just, I want to make it clear.
On what I'm voting on.
Thank you, me too.
I'm unclear. What, the staff report was to keep the twenty as the minimum.
Yep.
Now, what are we voting on?
So the motion, as I understand, is to keep the, keep minimum width of twenty feet.
Well, if I, if that's the motion, I vote aye.
Okay. Ms. Panero.
Nay.
Oh, wait, shouldn't we have some other discussion on the motion before we take a vote? See if there is any. I want to think, make sure that everybody does understand the motion, that if they vote for it, it'll stay twenty feet. We can defeat the motion, which would allow us to bring another motion to the floor, something that we all might agree with. So I want to make sure we all understand that.
Isn't that what we always
Discussion after the motion was made. We had some discussion before it, but.
Everyone understands what the motion is, and if people don't want to vote for that, then they don't, and then we have another vote.
We have another motion that can be brought to the floor.
Exactly right. We have another motion. We can do that. So Ms. Panero, what do you vote?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson. Ms. Wolfson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Nay.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Perlo.
Nay.
Mr. Warren.
Nay.
Mr. Caligari.
Nay.
Mr. Fotus. Mr. Arey.
Nay.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven nays. One, two, three, four, four yeses. It failed. Yes.
Okay, sorry, it doesn't matter, but Ms. Wolfson was trying to say aye. She raised her hand.
She was trying to say aye?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't, I didn't see it. Okay, it's still five to seven, so it's nay.
Hey, can I make a motion, please?
Yes, you can, Mr. Perlo.
I would make a motion that the Baltimore County Council hopefully approve that sixteen-foot townhouses be allowed as a matter of right in Baltimore County, that there be no other requirements other than it go through the normal Baltimore County Planning Department approval process.
Thank you, Mr. Perlo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, then I'm going to do a roll call on the new vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
Nay.
Nay? Yea or nay?
That was no.
No, okay, thank you. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Nay.
Mr. Halepka.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Oh.
Ms. Wolfson. I can't.
She's shaking no.
She's shaking no. Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Not here. Mr. Perlo.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari.
Aye.
Mr. Fotus. Mr. Arey.
No.
Seven nos.
Did we hear from Mr. Arey? I didn't hear it.
I said no.
He said no. And four yays. Is anyone from the planning department getting the same numbers I am?
I count five yays.
Five yays and seven nos.
Okay, there we go. So.
Is there another motion then from board members? Pardon?
Is there another motion on the floor? You have to have a motion.
Well, we don't have to pass anything. We can send.
Move on.
But we'll just indicate, Madam Chair, we'll just, we, if there's no motion that the board will pass, we will advise the council just that.
Okay.
The planning board has taken no position on this request.
I don't like that. I don't like that we take a no position. I think we have a, we have two different positions.
If you have different positions, that means you have no agreement on a position. So I'm, we can present it that way. There's no agreement on whether this reduced width should be adopted by the county council.
And are we allowed to bring this back up at a future meeting for discussion and a vote, a different motion or vote?
Mr. Lafferty?
The issue could come back. This was a reference from the county council to the planning board for our, our advice or our recommendation, your recommendation. And if the council decides to re-refer it to us at another time, they certainly could do so.
I'm wondering if, if there's an opportunity to find some middle ground that would be acceptable to some of the people that are hesitant to adopt this, that would put some sort of condition that planning department couldn't make sure gets enforced so that it would alleviate anybody's concerns about the sixteen or the eighteens, if it's parking or something else.
Well, Mr. Heckman, we had indicated that if there was support, that we, we would support conditional use, which would then establish certain conditions. And that may be an alternative or an alternative as well, even though we indicated to the council that we'd report back at this point in time. If the board decided to table the matter and take it up at the next meeting, but in all due respect, it would be incumbent upon board members to come up with some other option. We've presented, you know, our positions, and so if there's other options, we would defer to the board to come up with some alternative, and that would be an option.
Well, the council can accept or reject anything we say anyway.
Correct.
I mean, isn't this truly just to, to forward this, these recommendations to the council? That's all that's on the table here, correct? Both, both the rec, the, what the planning department supports and or proposes as well as what they would support? Isn't that what's in this plan?
The, the request from the county council was for the planning board to review the request by MBIA and to make a recommendation back to the council. And it is, it is, as you said, Ms. Wolfson, it's a recommendation to the council that can then either accept or reject any recommendation we provide.
Other than, Mr. Caligari?
Yeah, I was going to say that I think in some respects, the, the two votes sort of do provide some context for the county council when they, when they review the issue. I mean, it seemed to me that the planning board's pretty split, and there's some takeaways there that are somewhat indicative. So, I, I mean, I don't think it's really the lack. It doesn't, it doesn't say nothing. It just says that we didn't adopt a position that, that I think is somewhat telling and it fills our role in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Caligari. Are there any other comments at this time?
Mr. Lafferty?
I have a question.
Mr. Halepka.
Okay, maybe a couple of questions. The initial motion, no, the second motion was to allow the sixteen-foot by right. Is that the same, Mr. Lafferty, as what you were saying by sixteen-foot with conditional, by conditional use?
No, sir. No. Conditional use would require a hearing and determination whether or not the conditions can be met in order to grant the opportunity to build sixteen-foot units. Sorry for someone mowing my, their lawn outside here.
Yeah. I guess my second question, we'll wait till Steve gets back. Is that the same as the PUD process, or is it something different than the PUD?
It's different from a PUD.
Then I guess a slightly different, I mean, I know that the county has an affordable housing task force going on, but is there anyone looking at the sort of broader issue that I think Howard and Todd and others have raised? We're sort of running out of developable space, and so how does the county, how do we, this part of the master plan process, how are we going to address? I mean, to my mind, we either have to allow denser housing, we've got to change zoning, we've got to change, we've got to do something if we're going to, or we just say we're not going to build anything. But is there anyone with, you know, within the administration who's, who's taking a look at this issue right now? Because this seems bigger than just this, whether it's a sixteen-foot.
The, within the Affordable Housing work group that, that has been put in place by the county executive, there's been more discussion about whether zoning cla, different zoning classifications should allow units to be built as opposed to widths or different types of units. Now, one that has been presented is a accessory dwelling unit. But beyond that, there's been no, to my knowledge, maybe in at least the other subcommittee, there's been convers, no conversation about widths, heights, or any of those bulk regulations that are in place. It, like I said, a lot more discussion's been about opening up other zoning classifications to allow housing to be used and some proposed or thoughts about changing some of the processes.
Thank you. Well, then, actually, I would like to make a motion which is to approve the use of, to recommend to the council the approval of the sixteen-foot width, with, you know, with conditions as developed by the planning staff.
Do I have a second to that, Mr. Halepka's motion?
Second.
Okay, then we'll take a vote. All right, Mr. Schweitzer.
Nay.
Ms. Panero. Unfortunately, I'm afraid Ms. Panero's phone's not working, and so she dropped off the call. Mr. Hartman.
Nay.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. It's not here. Mr. Perlo.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari.
Aye.
Mr. Fotus is not here. Mr. Arey.
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Four, five. Six to five?
I had seven to four.
I had seven to five.
Okay.
I have seven to four.
Okay, motion carries.
Madam Chair, just to clarify and make sure that I've captured.
You want to get people outside.
Wait, wait, let, let Mr. Lafferty finish, please. Mr. Lafferty?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm accurately capturing what Mr. Halepka said, which was basically that they recommend sixteen-foot-wide houses would be permitted as of right with the conditions that we have stated in the report, staff report. Is that correct?
Mr. Halepka.
Yes, the, the conditional, as you described, what's the conditional uses that you specified?
Okay, thank you.
I, wait a minute, no, I disagree. I don't think your hearing's got, because if you say according to the report, you're saying it's only allowed by a PUD and.
No, sir.
No, that's not correct.
Mr. Perlo, that's not accurate.
Now, I want to make sure I understand what we're proving.
It's not, it's not only by a PUD, it'd be by conditional use. And on page thirteen of the report. And on page 13 of the report, we identified various conditions that we would recommend be adopted as part of the conditional use determination.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand because I'm sure we're not required.
I thought, I thought we already had a motion and it passed. I, I don't know why we're.
Well, Mr. Warren, because I want to make sure we capture the motion correctly.
All right. I have to jump off the call, so I'm going to jump off, but I, I don't want to miss out on a vote. So I thought we had a pass motion.
We do have a pass motion. And Mr. Lafferty was just clarifying it.
Okay. I thought we were saying that it could be 16 foot wides.
Yes.
As a condition, with a conditional use? All right, is there any other discussion on this matter? If not, moving on. Ms. Tracy, will you fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Recent county legislation of interest to the board, A, first, is Resolution 125-21, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation easements. It's a resolution to approve certain applications for the sale of development rights easements on properties located on farms that meet the state criteria for application in accordance with the Agriculture Article, Section 2-509 of the Annotated Code of Maryland. The county executive and the Department of Planning, with recommendation of the Baltimore County Agricultural Land Preservation Advisory Board, has provided the county council the ranking of applicants which were approved. Next, Resolution 129-21, amending the boundary of the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. A resolution for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Perry Hall Commercial Revitalization District. The amendment includes an extension along Bel Air Road to South Avenue. And Madam Chair, one addition. On Monday, October 4th, the county council approved the following resolutions. Resolution 126-21, for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Dundalk Commercial Revitalization District and designing, or excuse me, and designating that district as a design review area subject to review by the Design Review Panel. Resolution 127-21, for the purpose of amending the boundaries of the Essex Commercial Revitalization, Revitalization District and Essex Design Review Area. Resolution 128-21, designating the Liberty Road area as a design review area subject to review by the Design Review Panel. Each of these areas mentioned in the resolutions, Dundalk, Essex, and Liberty Road, set forth guidelines that will be incorporated into the appendices of the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies, abbreviated as CMDP. Earlier this year, the planning board voted to approve updates to the CMDP, Section 4, Special Areas and Procedures, appendix updates, as well as the design review areas and design guidelines. That completes the report. Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Greatly appreciated.
This is the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? And we will immediately, at 5 o'clock, have a public hearing. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll see you all at 5 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, good evening. It's 5 o'clock and we're going to be starting the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing for the Pikesville Commercial Revitalization Action Plan. The public hearing is called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford. I'm the chairwoman of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We will start with the roll call, declaring for all our board members that are present for this meeting. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Hulipka?
Here.
Mr. Johnson? Ms. Wolfson?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Perlo? Mr. Warren? Mr. Caligari? Mr. Fodus? Mr. Avery?
Here.
Thank you all. The Baltimore County Planning Board Meeting of September 23rd, 2021, Mr. William Zabinski, Baltimore County Department of Planning, Community Planning, Western Sector Coordinator, introduced the Pikesville Commercial Revitalization A, Action Plan. Mr. Zabinski is here to further present on the Pikesville Commercial Revitalization Action, Action Plan to the board. Following Mr. Zabinski's presentation, the public will have an opportunity to speak on this issue. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Zabinski.
Yes, hello, good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you for being here for the second part of the Pikesville Action Plan. Also want to thank members of the community that I see here this evening. Just like to say that this really is their plan and reflects the feedback gathered over the past four plus years, along with a lot of other work that has gone into revitalizing Pikesville, you know, even prior to the study beginning in 2017. So with that, I'm going to bring up a PowerPoint. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Before we get into some of the meat of providing a summary of, of the action plan, just wanted to give a couple of recap slides. Firstly, here again, as you saw during the introduction, is the action plan timeline, which highlights some of the major timeline events. Of course, today I've added the public hearing has been added as a milestone timeline event. You can see some of the other milestones going back to that April 2017, when the Pikesville study began, and then moving into April 2019, when that study was presented and to the community as well as published online, which led into a great deal more community input as well as the drafting of this Pikesville Commercial Revitalization Action Plan. Final comments were received on August of 2021. The introduction was at the last planning board meeting on September 23rd. Also want to provide another quick recap of some of the commercial revitalization programs that are available to the Pikesville Commercial Revitalization District. So with that, with Pikesville being within the county Commercial Revitalization District, it does have several opportunities for revitalization programs, such as the Commercial Revitalization Action Grant, Architect on Call, the Building Improvement Loan Program, the Commercial Revitalization Tax Credit, as well as the redevelopment incentive funds. Pikesville is also within the, also has adopted commercial revitalization guidelines, which further steer, steers quality redevelopment and improvement in the Pikesville CRD, as well as also having, being a part of the Commercial Design Review Panel. So along with the county's incentives, Pikesville CRD is also within the state's Northwest Gateways Sustainable Communities area, which also allows more opportunities for funding for revitalization, such as the Baltimore Regional Neighborhood Initiative or Bernie Community Legacy and the Strategic Demolition Fund. Here are the major points identified throughout the commercial district study, which took place primarily between April of 2017 through July of 2019. The findings are described in greater detail in the plan, but I wanted to provide an overview of this information before reviewing and summarizing some of the major sections of the Pikesville Action Plan. So these major findings that came out of the study were, one, you know, needing, that need for some strong leadership in order to get some of these projects implemented and seeking out state and county funding. Saw that there was a need for a new reimagined identity for Pikesville. So that may involve further refined design guidelines and reevaluating some of the commercial zoning in the area, as well as looking at marketing and promotion strategies and potentially seeking out some other state designations, such as Main Street Maryland or a artist district. We also saw that there were aesthetic and infrastructure improvements needed, such as streetscape and sods, looking at property maintenance enforcement, looking at ways to improve some of the litter issues and dumpster control issues that we observed, and also looking at ways to improve parking and transportation through the district. And lastly, looking at some areas that could create some transformative redevelopment. So in the event, areas such as the Surf Suburban Club, where it ever become available, is an opportunity. Certainly, the Pikesville Armory is a tremendous opportunity, as well as looking at other areas for the library, Pikesville Library and Senior Center. Now, all of these findings are reflected within the action plan and its goals for review in greater detail here shortly. One of the essential accomplishments, accomplishments of the study and the community input process was to develop a, a vision for and by the Pikesville community. So here are the eight primary components of that vision. Now go ahead and read. Community one, it's a vibrant, clean, safe, and walkable area. They'd like to see improved streetscapes and facades. They would like area that attracts local residents as well as regional visitors. More open gathering space for the community to enjoy. More local events for the community to enjoy as well. Like to see a trail network developed that interconnects the various neighborhoods and the Commercial Revitalization District, as well as improved truck, traffic and parking, and looking at ways to bring in more mixed use or live where you work development. Along with the community's vision, the plan's overarching purpose and vision applies to two main components, one being within the commercial revitalization. And this plan's purpose is really to seek out achievable goals, as well as implementing improvements to the built environment, creating a vibrant. creating a vibrant district with a strong sense of identity, seeking out county and state funding, as well as promoting adaptive reuse, prioritization and reinvestment in the properties. Along with that, there is the creation of a action plan committee that will focus on the goals and action items that we'll discuss shortly. And that will also bring in more engaged leadership and stronger advocacy towards revitalizing the district. Will also provide much greater business outreach, as well as collaboration with groups such as the Chamber of Commerce and as well as various Baltimore County agencies. So here are the 10 primary goals that I've talked about. These are the expected results of the action plan. Just going to go ahead and read these out loud. So goal number one is to create a Pikesville identity and marketing campaign. Goal two is to have improvements to streetscape and facades, streamline and promote revitalization programs. Goal four, monitor and improve transportation and parking. Goal five, update design guidelines and evaluate zoning classifications. Goal six, improve litter and dumpster issues. Goal seven, evaluate maintenance enforcement. Excuse me, that was goal seven, evaluate maintenance enforcement. Goal eight, evaluate the relocation of Pikesville Senior Center and Library. More emphasis on the Senior Center. Goal nine, develop plans for opportunity sites. Excuse me, there's a typo there, that should be plans for opportunity sites. Goal 10, develop a roadmap for those state designations, such as Main Street Maryland or Artist District. So all revitalization faces challenges, but within those challenges, opportunities are always present. Pikesville certainly faces challenges with areas such as the building and streetscape conditions, while as there being that perception of the district and the issues with the litter. There's definitely challenges with getting various groups to coordinate. There's issues with capacity and quality of the businesses within the CRD, as well as challenges with finding funding and seeking out developers to reinvest into the area. There are challenges with traffic and parking, and of course, with Reisterstown Road or Maryland 140 being a state highway, just adds another layer of complications. And then also being able to work with the Revenue Authority is not so much a challenge, but can be an opportunity. Opportunities in Pikesville is that it does have, Pikesville is a unique area with a rich history, has an eclectic character, and if marketed to a broad redevelopment audience, Pikesville's changing demographics and locational advantage may create new exciting opportunities for the area. We did discuss the three revitalization target areas during the introduction, but just to go over those again, we do have the Pikesville Commercial Revitalization split into three sub-areas. The first one in yellow being the suburban commercial, which is from the Beltway down to Old Court Road. We then have the Central Business District highlighted in red, which is that high-impact area where we're really going to focus on a lot of these revitalization goals outlined in the plan. And then moving down from Sudbrook Avenue down to the city line, we have in green the neighborhood commercial area. The action plan's overall approach is to serve as a formal guide that outlines achievable revitalization goals while moving the community's vision forward. Speaking for myself, I hope that the plan ignites productive collaboration between the various community and business associations, namely the Chamber of Commerce, as well as other business and property owners and Baltimore County Government. Lastly, the plan provides a detailed action plan guide that outlines those 10 revitalization goals and the various action items needed to achieve each goal. The guide will also provide a listing of coordinators, as well as partners and contributors, approximate timeframes for each action item, and potential funding sources. So you can see here on the screen is an example of just one of the goals that we have outlined in that action plan guide. And that's all I have for this presentation. Does anyone have any questions before we get into the public testimonies?
Board members, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Zabinski. At this time, I will call on those of you that have completed the online registration posted on the board's website to speak on the topic, in order that you did register. For those who wish to provide written testimony during the hearing, you can do so by typing your comments to the host in the chat box, and the comments will be read to the board members during this meeting. Please refer to the online instructions for entering comments and procedures for speaking during the meeting. Speakers, please remember your comments are limited to two minutes. Right now, I will start with Mr. Neville Jacobs. Mr. Jacobs, are you here?
Mr. Jacobs, you are unmuted at this time.
Thank you, Miles. Mr. Jacobs. All right, while we work that out, Mr. Dean Rundell, are you available right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of machines going here, computer and phone, I couldn't get my, hear you through the computer, so. I represent Thousand Friends of Pikesville, Inc., which is a group that's been around for almost 10 years now. It represents a large block of Pikesville residents and community leaders. Thank you, Madam Chair, and board members and planning staff, especially Bill Zabinski, who has carried through over difficult times, but has always been engaging with us, and so I thank him for his efforts. And everyone who has put their effort in to see this action plan for the revitalization of Pikesville adopted into the current 2020 County Master Plan, so that it will carry over to the 2030 County Master Plan currently being formulated. Thank you all, including the county executive and certainly Councilman Patoka, for their efforts towards this important task. We are cognizant that the professional staff of the planning department included so many of the recommendations previously presented during the comment period by Thousand Friends of Pikesville, Inc. The collaboration between the county and the community to produce this action plan is exemplary, and we appreciate it, and the entire community does. There are a few additional items we would like to set out for consideration and inclusion. Number one, under Transportation and Parking, on page six, in the second bullet point, at the end of the sentence, please consider adding, after District, utilizing the concept of context-sensitive design. Number two, under Goal Three, page two, at the end of the sentence, add, after the word Station, and to the surrounding neighborhoods. In number three, in Goals Eight and Nine, page 16, under the column of Partners and Contributors, add the Revenue Authority, which I think Bill just referred to, to both of those as partners. And number four, on page 17, Goal 11, there's only 10 goals right now, but we would like to add an 11th goal, develop the historic Pikesville Armory Finance Program and implement development of the historic Pikesville Armory in accordance with the mission statement established by the Governor's Commission to study the future of the Pikesville Armory. Further, a Traffic and Safety Committee for Thousand Friends of Pikesville looked at long-range actions that would further enhance the viability of Reisterstown Road Corridor, as not just a pass-through convenience as it is now, but a highly desirable shopping destination for local residents and visitors alike.
Mr. Rundell, you have a second left, yes.
Thank you. And you can submit your comments to the board, and we'll make sure we read them. Thank you, Mr. Rundell. Were we able to get Mr. Jacobs on?
I've unmuted him.
Mr. Jacobs?
Well, we can't hear you.
Okay, then we'll go to Mr. Mel Mintz.
Mintz.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I apologize.
That's okay. Madam Chair, Hoferd, and Director Lafferty, my name is Mel Mintz. Thank you for your attention to this plan. The professional planning staff has created a very good document. While it does not include every jot that has been suggested by me or everyone involved in this process, it is a very good document. The process was community-initiated, as Mr. Rundell said, over nine years ago. I commend the late Kevin Caminitz directing the county to formally begin this process four years ago. During all those combined nine years, as Mr. Zabinski said, there was a great deal of community input. It has had some fits and starts, causing it to take this amount of time to get before you. I am proud to have a wee bit of input in contributing to elements in this document. County Executive Bocheski and Councilman Patoka are to be commended for igniting the current increase in activity to get this document before you. The planning staff, particularly Bill Zabinski, has diligently kept at this process utilizing every bit of community input and compiling this former plan. Today, you just heard from Thousand Friends of Pikesville, delivered by the Revitalization Committee chaired by Dean Rundell. The Transportation Committee was chaired by Neville Jacobs. The beautiful Pikesville Committee was chaired by Dara Brady. The Hike Bike and Pike Committee was chaired by Amy Rabino. The Armory Committee was chaired by Howard Needle, Billy Chase on the Redevelopment Committee, and Shelley Mooreham as president. Plus, neighborhood associations throughout the community have all weighed in, all have contributed mightily to this effort. I trust that there will be an appropriate time to explore some additional refinements. Again, congratulations to all contributing to getting this plan produced. I hope and urge that it will receive the planning board's positive vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mintz, for your comments. I'm going to give this one last time. Mr. Neville Jacobs, are you able to get in?
I don't know, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Mr. Jacobs.
Oh, okay, very good. What I'd just like to do is read the second part of Mr. Rundell's presentation, but he was timed out for, if I may. And that is that further the Traffic and Safety Committee for the Thousand Friends of Pikesville looked at longer-range actions that would further enhance the viability of the Reisterstown Corridor as not just a traffic pass-through convenience as it is now, but as a highly desirable shopping destination for local residents and visitors alike. In order to accomplish this, we must, one, improve the access to stores and restaurants by making changes to remove the no-left-turn restrictions and creating a fifth turn lane at the intersections. Two, enhance the area by moving the utility and communication lines and poles from Reisterstown Road to behind the buildings along the Rizier Lane. Similar successful action was taken by Cadensville a few years ago in order to enhance that downtown and increase rental retail activity and investment by improving the visual quality of the community core. Make, number three is make crosswalks safer with the possibility of providing traffic islands along Reisterstown Road in the area of the Central Business District. This could be made possible by the widening of Reisterstown Road once the utility poles have been relocated. We believe these additions will make a very good and historic document into an even better one, and we thank everyone involved for the continuous efforts to engage the entire community for input and comments throughout the planning process, and for completion of the action plan for revitalization of Pikesville, even through these difficult times of COVID. Thank you for your time and consideration of these important concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jacobs. And I want to thank all of you that came to speak on this issue tonight. Mr. Mullenberger, is there any other written comments on this topic?
I have received no other chat, any comments in the chat at this time.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Zabinski, thank you so very much for your presentation. This item is tentatively scheduled for a vote at the October 21st Planning Board meeting. If there's no further questions, this concludes our public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn our public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. Have a good evening.